Welcome you to the Peoria City Council Meeting. As a courtesy to others, please silence all phones. If you would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to the council regarding a non-agenda item, please complete a speaker request form, which can be found in the front lobby of the Peoria City Council Chambers, or in the tray to the left of the speaker's podium. Please place the completed speaker request form in the second tray to the left of the speaker's podium labeled "Request to Speak." All speakers will have three minutes to complete their comments. A countdown clock is easily visible on the left side of the wall behind the City Council dais. Only items listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council Meeting.
Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Hunt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Benzbocker.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
And Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of June 13, 2017. This evening, the agenda begins with three presentations, and so we're going to begin with the Certificates of Completion to the 2017 Peoria Leadership Institute Graduates. And I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Julie Arundel to join me in the front. The city of Peoria is very proud to host a seminar, if you will, a workshop of Leadership Institute graduates. They go through about six weeks of... Six weeks or... Nine weeks now. We're up to nine weeks. And they have an opportunity to go through each one of our city departments and learn how the city actually operates. And my favorite part is that they get to see the pride that the city of Peoria employees have in the jobs that they do. So tonight, we are going to give each one of you a certificate. We did have the opportunity to have a little bit of dinner and some conversation prior to coming here tonight, and so it's been just a real joy being able to have some one-on-one time with you. And now, if you will come up when we call your name, I think you're going to get your picture taken, too. All right.
First, Gary Bernard.
Thanks again for all of your attention and for how much you care about the city of Peoria. We just can't have enough people who know and are interested. We hope that you'll come back one of these days and run for election or have a job in public service. Appreciate all that you do. Thank you so much. And now, we have some more presentations. I'm going to ask Councilmember Finn to come down and join me. These are certificates of appointment to boards and commissions. And Councilmember Finn is the chairperson of the Council Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions, and so he is going to lead us off here.
All right, well, thank you. Before we start calling down some names, just want to thank everyone that volunteers for our city on the boards and commissions. We have 20 boards and commissions with over 100 volunteers that help us out and help us run the city. We certainly couldn't do it without them, so we appreciate all of volunteers' time. It certainly saves us a lot of money, for one, but we get a lot of citizen input, so it's very helpful for us, and I appreciate everyone's participation. Do you want me to read these off?
You can hand it to you and you can read it.
Okay.
Can you do that?
We can do this however you want. You're the mayor.
Let's do this. You read the name.
Absolutely. If you hold it steady, I'll read it. Maybe this plan isn't working.
Yes.
Okay, all right. We have Katrina Ramagen on the library board. There we go. I thought we had a bad plan. And we also have Anthony Van Gotham for the Parks and Recreation Board. I do, I am going to call you up again. You might as well come back, because you're also on the Veterans Memorial Board. Thank you for that double duty. We have James Hahn for the Public Defender Contract Review Committee. And finally, we have Madeline Stuckey for the Youth Advisory Board. Again, thank you for everybody that volunteers their time.
Well, this evening, we have something bittersweet to present. Our city manager, who has been with the city of Peoria for 11 years, is retiring. Carl Swenson... There he is. Carl Swenson has been just a fabulous city manager. He has not only taken us through a very difficult time during the economic downturn, but he is leaving us with very strong financial situation. He has also left us with a succession plan that allowed us to find a replacement for him internally. So, I mean, you really can't ask for more than that. He has taken good care of us, he has held our citizens and our employees harmless during the worst of times, and we are forever grateful. So Carl, would you please come here? We're going to do a two-part thing here. I am going to read a proclamation from the city of Peoria to you, so if you will all excuse my whereases. The City of Peoria Proclamation. Whereas Carl Swenson is retiring July 5, 2017, after 11 years of outstanding service with nine years as city manager for the city of Peoria. And whereas during his 35 years in city government, he has served with distinction. And whereas he has provided valuable guidance and good counsel to the mayor and the city council for the last 11 years. And whereas Carl has faithfully implemented the policy direction of the city council with a focus on ethical behavior centered around customer service excellence. And whereas during his years of service as city manager, Carl Swenson has been an outstanding leader and a significant contributor to this community and to the region. And whereas Carl has created a deep appreciation in the city organization of the privilege to serve the public, and he leaves the city of Peoria and its citizens enriched due to his dedication, spirit, and efforts on their behalf. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Peoria that we hereby express and proclaim our appreciation and gratitude to Carl Swenson for his many years of hard work and exemplary public service to the city of Peoria. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and caused the seal of the city of Peoria, Arizona, to be affixed this 13th day of June 2017, and this is signed by myself as the mayor and each one of our city council members. We have one more thing for you. The city of Peoria created a special park for the Arizona State Centennial, and we have a decades walk, and it is filled with bricks that indicate specific milestones. And we here have a brick that we are going to present to Carl Swenson this evening that will be implanted permanently in the decades walk.
Well, I'm pretty speechless. Thank you, Mayor Carlet. Councilmembers, I really appreciate it. It's really been the honor of my professional life to serve the city of Peoria. I've been fortunate to serve three great communities over my 35 years: Bellevue, Washington, Oak Park, Illinois, and now for the last 11 years here in Peoria. And this has really been the culmination of my career, and I can't thank you enough, Mayor Carlet. Your leadership has been outstanding, and the council. This is a great council that works well together and supports the staff. I think what I think of in the council-manager form of government is the partnership between the elected leadership and the professional staff and employees of the city working together. And no city exemplifies the strength of the council-manager form of government, I think, more than the city of Peoria, and that's due to your leadership and to the great work of the city staff. So it's been a real honor. I leave the city in great hands, great elected leaders, and great city staff, and shortly we'll be introducing the next city manager here on the agenda this evening. And it's an outstanding group of employees that really deliver great value to all of the citizens of the city, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Excuse me. Tonight's consent agenda includes liquor licenses and other types of items that require a public hearing. If there is any member of the public present who would like to address a public hearing on the consent agenda, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. The item will be removed from the consent agenda and heard during the normal course of the regular agenda. Is there a member of the public who would like to address an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, council, are there any items to be removed from consent?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove 24C for discussion.
24C, thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item 24C? All right. Council, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
The motion in a second. Council, please vote. And the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 24C. Could we have a staff report, Mr. Swenson?
Yes, and Scott White, our Economic Development Services Director, will make a brief presentation on this item. That may not have picked up. I think it's working now. Scott White, our Economic Development Services Director, will make a brief presentation on this item.
Great, thank you. Mayor, City Council. There we go. We'll start again. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight is an amended and restated ground lease between the city of Peoria and Arizona Broadway Theater. To give you a little background, there have been a number of amendments to the ground lease, some of which are captured in this slide going back to 2003, 2007, 2010. Most recently, Arizona Broadway Theater approached the city looking for an amendment opportunity again. So I've been working with Arizona Broadway Theater team to look at the principles under which we would go forward with an amendment. The deal points associated with such amendment was presented to city council on May 2, and it culminated in an agreement that is before you tonight. In terms of the amended ground lease objectives, I mentioned the principles going forward. Some of those principles included, we wanted to make sure, given the history of amendments to this agreement, that going forward, we have a commercially viable and customary approach in terms of establishing appraised value of the land that we own, as well as what's a market-based rent that's appropriate for the ground lease. So as a reminder, we own the land, and Arizona Broadway Theater owns the private improvements in the form of the buildings, the parking lot, and so forth. So what we wanted to look at in terms of one objective is establishing a commercially viable rent and increase to the rent over time, reflecting and recognizing that this is a special-use building as a theater, meaning that it would be difficult to reuse and repurpose if it were used for anything other than a theater. Another objective that we wanted to look at is establishing a path going forward for Arizona Broadway Theater to be in a position to be able to purchase the land. So at that point in time where Arizona Broadway Theater elects to exercise the purchase option that's contained within the ground lease, they could have a path towards purchasing the land, so they would own the land and the building. We wanted to look at resetting the rent schedule reflective of the new rent and the duration of the ground lease, and establish a path forward that included the ability of the city to purchase back the building in terms of a first right of refusal upon the election of the purchase option by Arizona Broadway Theater should they get into a situation where the lender's taking the building back. So that's to protect our interests long-term. So see, these are some of the principles or objectives that we sought to accomplish in terms of this amended and restated ground lease document. In terms of the ground lease terms, to name a few, we're looking at a 25-year initial term for the ground lease. We're looking for two 10-year options to extend for a total maximum duration of 45 years. The rent is equal to 8% of appraised value. 8% based information we've received from C.B. Richard Ellis is a commercially viable rent for the property in the area that it is. And in looking at the appraised value, we looked at it as if vacant, because we don't own the private improvements, and as deed-restricted for a special-purpose building, because that's what it is. In terms of escalators, or otherwise known as rent increases, they're pegged to Consumer Price Index capped at 12%, with increases every 10 years. Having longer-term durations for rent increases is customary for long-term ground leases as opposed to shorter-term that might have annual rent increases. Minimum rent is set for the rent that was in place at the time of adjustment. So we always are capped at a floor and a ceiling in terms of the rent adjustments. In terms of the land purchase option, all these payments under the new lease, not retroactive to prior leases, but under the new lease, can be applied to the purchase price at the point in time then that ABT elects to purchase the property. At the time of the purchase option, if executed within five years of the effective date of this amended lease, the purchase price will be the current appraised value. If after the five years, that'll be based on a new appraised value. And as I mentioned, we have the right of first refusal to purchase the building and the land back. to purchase the building and the land back should there be a situation warranting that And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott, so I have a series of questions for you. So, in the term, in the course of the time that they've owned the building since 2005, I believe it is, how many times have they come back to renegotiate this contract?
Oh, I believe it's been quite a few. Not knowing the exact number off the top of my head, I would estimate between seven, 10 times would be my guess.
10 times?
Yeah.
Okay. And during that, so today's proposal, how did, how was the appraisal, how did it come about? You know, how did they come up with this price? Because this price of $685,000 is quite different than what the appraisal was just less than two years ago when we did our audit on it and ABT did one as well. And I know there was quite a bit of a difference in between what we had appraised it on and what they thought it was. And this number here is nowhere near what we had appraised it for less than two years ago.
Yes, thank, great question. I wasn't involved in those prior amendments or appraisal efforts. My understanding is that prior appraisals probably looked at the land as unrestricted. Unrestricted land is going to be more valuable than restricted land. So anytime you throw a deed restriction on a property, or assume such in an appraisal, it's going to have downward pressure on the value. The reason why in this appraisal, we wanted to look at the land to be in harmony with the actual use of the building. The building's a theater, it's a special-use building, it's very difficult to reuse, and so therefore, it's somewhat restricted in its application, or the range of uses that could be applied towards it. Similarly, we looked at the appraiser looking at the land as if vacant and as deed restricted for a special-use theater building. That way, I believe you have better harmony between what the land can be used for and what the buildings upon it are used for. Because of that, the appraised value as deed restricted and vacant came in at $685,000, which is the reason for the lower valuation.
And do you feel, you and your staff feel that that's a fair price?
Yes. We rely on the appraiser. Part of putting forward a commercially viable approach is to have it appraised appropriately, and then to set the rent as a percentage of appraised value. So I believe going forward with 8% of appraised, as the appraiser has determined it to be appropriate relative to the special-use nature of the building, as restricted and vacant, I believe is fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Do we have a motion on item 24C?
No motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And 24C passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to new business, and I am going to exercise the option of the chair to take Agenda Item 38R out of order, and we're going to hear this one first. This is the appointment of new city manager. And may I have a staff report from Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. It'd be my pleasure. You have before you an employment agreement with Jeff Tyne to be the next city manager. The council conducted interviews and deliberated on those interviews and chose Mr. Tyne, whose contract is before you tonight. I'll give just a little bit about Jeff's background. Certainly, the council all knows, as for the citizens present and watching, Jeff has been an employee of the city of Peoria since 1997. He began with the city as the management and budget director in 1997. He held that position to 2011. In 2011, I asked Jeff to be the interim community services director, a longtime community services director had retired, and Jeff was willing to step in and be the interim community services director, which he did for 2011 and 2012, when he became the budget and management and budget director again from 2012 to 2013. In 2013, I was pleased to be able to promote Jeff to the position of deputy city manager, which is the position he has held up until now. Jeff, before coming to the city, Jeff was the budget manager with the city of Chandler, Arizona, and before that was senior management assistant with the city of Glendale, Arizona. So a long tradition of management and leadership within the state of Arizona. Jeff has a strong educational background. He has a bachelor's degree of arts in political science from Arizona State University, a master's degree in public administration from Arizona State University School of Public Affairs with a specialization in urban management and planning. And he is a recent graduate of the Senior Executives in State and Local Government Program at the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard. So a very strong academic background to go with his years of dedicated service to the city of Peoria and the state of Arizona. He is a former trustee and vice chair, an acting chair of the Arizona State Retirement System appointed by the governor, was the former chair and national committee, for the National Committee on Economic Development and Capital Planning from the Government Finance Officers Association, and is the past president of the Government Finance Officers Association for the state of Arizona. He's a member of the International City Management Association and is a credentialed city manager from that association, is also a member of the Arizona State City Management Association. It's my pleasure to recommend Jeff to you this evening.
Thank you. That's very impressive. Counsel, is there any discussion or questions on item 38R? How about a motion?
No motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. And the appointment of the new city manager passes unanimously. Jeff Tyne, congratulations. Mr. Tyne will be formally sworn in at the next council meeting. Thank you. And with that, I am going to turn the gavel over to the vice mayor. I have to excuse myself this evening, so thank you so very much. You're in good hands.
Bear with me just a little bit. Okay, so we, for new business, we have number 34R, which is the lease and development agreement for Novo Development LLC, 15814 North 83rd Avenue. Mr. Swenson may have a staff report?
Yes, Vice Mayor Edwards. Scott is back to make a presentation on this item as well.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight is entering into a development agreement and lease with Novo Development for the city-owned building in P-83, formerly known as the Country Diesel Restaurant. In looking at some of the objectives we had in acquiring this building, you may recall, this is a building located on 83rd and Mariners, right adjacent to Huntington University's building. And at the time, this was a building that had routinely turned over in terms of restaurant management. And most recently, the Country Diesel Restaurant failed. So because P-83 is a strategic economic development district for us, looking at the strategic nature and location of the building, and not wanting to continue the pattern of restaurants starting and failing, starting and failing, but rather to see if we could repurpose the building to be used for employment-generating uses as we started with our P-83 Building Reuse Program, we wanted to see if we could engage in some market intervention strategies and purchase the building so that we could break that cycle of failed restaurant efforts. Also, we wanted to be able to preserve the opportunity to repurpose the building into employment-generating use consistent with the Economic Development Implementation Strategy for advanced industry attraction. And this is a market creation effort. And, as I mentioned, continue with the spirit and theme of the P-83 Building Reuse Program in terms of repositioning these buildings as opportunities arise for more employment-generating uses. In terms of this transaction, the City Council authorized staff to commission an appraisal and title report to purchase the property in February of 16. Council authorized a purchase price based on appraised value April of 2016. Council approved a purchase contract in June of 16. And once acquired, we entered into an updated appraisal on the property back in December of 2016. The Novo Development representative is here with us tonight and also attended the 2017 Peoria Investment Forum. And based on things that we have been doing in P-83 and what we talked about in the investment forum, they expressed interest in working with the city to repurpose this building. So there's two documents that work together concerning this transaction. One is the development agreement. In this development agreement, Novo Development will promote marketing, sales, leasing activity to our property to attract the type of targeted industry that we want in terms of EDIS implementation. They're going to move forward with a design development set of plans for interior and exterior improvements and demolition plans as they look to transition this building from a current restaurant layout to a professional office layout. Within three years, Novo is going to secure the targeted industry tenant. We're looking at certain metrics inclusive of a minimum of 50 new full-time equivalent jobs with at least a $55,000 per year average salary for all of that 50 FTE positions. Novo is going to invest at least $2 million of its own money in the tenant improvement build-out once a tenant is secured. And once Novo and the city execute a lease, that'll be done once the targeted industry tenant is secured, and we know that we're going forward with the actual advanced industry coming into the building. At that point in time, then, our triple-net lease will kick in, meaning that Novo has secured the advanced industry tenant. The lease itself is a 65-year term with the building accepted in as-is condition. Rent is at 8% of appraised value. That's $1.4 million with the deed restriction. Similar construct, as was discussed, for the Arizona Broadway Theater. This deed restriction, though, would be limiting use to exclude restaurants, bars, and sports bars so that we don't get back into that cycle of failed restaurant experiences. Rent at 8% of appraised values, roughly $112,000 a year or $9,300 a month. Escalators or increases to rent is annual at 3%. As tenant, Novo is going to pay for all utilities, property owner's association fees, insurance, taxes, custodial services, being a triple-net lease. This is eligible for priority track processing. You may recall the policy that council approved last year. For targeted projects to have priority track means that they go to front-of-the-line for building plan review as well as permitting at no cost as a way of motivating reuse of targeted buildings into advanced industry attraction. The city, as landlord, will remain responsible for major building systems such as the roof and HVAC. Because of the extraordinary costs associated with transitioning a restaurant building and layout into a professional office building and layout, we recognize that some assistance on the tenant improvements is appropriate, based on feedback from C.B. Richard Ellis as to what's a market-generated tenant improvement allowance at $35 a square foot. That's approximately $425,000 to help offset the cost of the tenant improvements upon targeted industry being secured. Then, of course, the deed restriction being applied going forward. Novo Development, their obligations under the development agreement is to conduct sales and marketing of premises. Under the lease, they have one year from the effective date for the building to be occupied by an advanced industry tenant within three years to secure the minimum of 50 jobs, $55,000 per year average salary. And should Novo, through its tenant, not meet certain performance obligations, the city's $425,000 in tenant improvements would be reimbursable. There is a purchase option component to the lease, which can be exercised by Novo Development at any time. If exercised within five years, the current appraised value is the purchase price. If exercised after five years, a new appraisal would be conducted, and that would be the purchase price. We have a 30-day right of first offer to purchase the property after the purchase option election is made by Novo, and 60 days of due diligence with a 30-day close on the purchase option. In terms of public benefit, once fully secured by a tenant, the building will be fully improved for office use, which is a transitional reuse from restaurant. Novo is investing $2 million in TIA build-out, office for targeted industry attraction, 50 new jobs minimum, minimum average salary $55,000. Terms of rental income to the city, at $112,000 a year, our break-even point for the $425,000 in tenant improvement allowance is four years. We have a relatively short break-even point. There's provisions for the building to be continuously occupied by that targeted industry tenant, subject to default and cure provisions, and of course, the deed restriction enforcing our limitations in terms of continued restaurant use. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Scott. Counsel, any questions, comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And 34R passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 35R. This is the ground lease and license agreement with Plaza Companies, Loop 101 and Peoria Avenue. Mr. Swenson, report?
Yes, Scott, we'll be making a presentation on this item as well.
Great, thank you. This is an exciting project, as they all are, but this one has its roots in our 2016 Peoria Investment Forum, as well as the actions of the city to purchase a piece of strategically-located property on Peoria Avenue and Loop 101 so that we can exercise the strategy in our economic development implementation strategy in terms of market intervention. So, to go over some of the project objectives in going forward with this project and the acquisition that preceded it, one of those objectives was to acquire property to block which, at that time, was being considered by the then-property owner for another strip retail center. The Economic Development Implementation Strategy recognizes the limited number of large parcels in the Loop 101 corridor between Northern and Bell Road, and the importance of those parcels in terms of creating new office product for advanced industry attraction. So what we wanted to do there is to intervene in the market, to purchase the property, to position ourselves to be able to enter into a development agreement or a ground lease, as is the case today, to turn this property into a commercial office center. Also, to implement the EDIS II initiative to increase the inventory of appropriate and modern commercial space to attract those targeted industries, and that's market creation. This is a site plan that illustrates what we believe is the execution for this 14-acre city-owned property that is bounded by the 101 and Peoria Avenue. We have three two-story commercial office buildings. We believe this to be Class B-plus office product that would be appropriate for business services, advanced business services, perhaps medical, as we look to grow our footprint of appropriate space to attract advanced industries so that we can of appropriate space to attract advanced industries so that we can have more of a jobs-housing balance in the city of Peoria. This is a rendering illustrating what we believe that execution to be with some high-quality design finishes attractive for the types of industries we want to bring to Peoria. In terms of quick background, following the investment forum back in March of 2016, we entered an exclusive negotiating agreement between the Plaza Companies and the city of Peoria. That was approved in October of 2016. We updated the appraisal. That was done in February of 17. Conceptual site plan and development program completed in January of 17, after which point we started in earnest in terms of deal point negotiations for a resulting ground lease, and that was concluded in May of 17. In terms of the ground lease terms, it's a 75-year initial term, two 10-year options to extend for a total of 95-year unsupervised ground lease. The leased premises, it's important to note, is the five feet beyond each book building footprint, and the area outside the leased premises remains city-controlled land. This area is to be improved, maintained, and repaired by Plaza as a public area under a license agreement with the city. So the item before you tonight is two documents. One is a ground lease and one is a license agreement. Plaza has a purchase option at the then-appraised value. With automatic lease termination, no certificate of occupancy is realized by June of 2020. This is just to make sure that we're not out for a long term if we're not going to be able to get what we believe we will be getting. It's just a protection. In terms of rent, 8% of appraised value, which is applied to the leased premises. Escalators or rent increases similar to Arizona Broadway Theater, Consumer Price Index capped at 12% with minimum rent set at the amount just prior to readjustment. Quarterly payments of rent starting on the second anniversary from the issuance of certificate of occupancy for any building in the development. First year rent can be deferred but paid during the term of the ground lease at 4% accrued And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Edwards. This item will be presented by Deputy City Manager Susan Deludon, Lisa Estrada, and Brent Mattingly. And as they're coming up, just a couple of introductory comments. As, of course, the council is well aware, we have a very focused program on sustainability and environmental stewardship. And of course, we are also noted for fiscal stewardship in following our principles of sound financial management. And this is a place where those two things come together. As we've discussed at various points in the past, often environmental stewardship, the exercising environmental stewardship is also exercising good fiscal stewardship, and this item is a case in point. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you, City Manager Carl Swenson. It has been with his leadership and support that sustainability, along with other initiatives in the city, including diversity, have really grown and thrived. So for that, the team thanks you for your support of our sustainability in the city. And actually, I'm very happy that this is the night that we get to present this project because, as Mr. Swenson knows, we have been working on this project for two years now. So it's a very exciting project. It is infrastructure, but it's bringing something new to the city that's a culmination of a lot of effort. There's two actions that we're going to be presenting to you simultaneously, 36R and 37R. 36R allows the city to enter into the Energy Savings Performance Contract, and it includes a budget amendment to allow that to happen. And 37R is a CREBBS action. It's a Clean Renewable Energy Bonds, which is an application with the IRS, the Internal Revenue Service. CREBBS is a federal incentive, and it provides financing at a lower interest rate at a good subsidy to bring down the cost of the project. In order to do that, Brent Mattingly, our finance director, will be looking for authorization under 37R. So one is the contract, the other is the means for paying for it. So what is an Energy Savings Performance Contract? Did you take all the words away, Lisa, so I'll have to remember? Okay, I will tell you what an Energy Savings Performance Contract is. First of all, it allows the city to invest in capital projects through guaranteed energy savings. These guaranteed energy savings essentially completely pay for the lease purchase price through our existing utility budgets. So it'll bring down those electric and utility assessments in each department to take the money to pay for this contract. The city, at the end of the contract, will only assets. It'll own the lighting and the solar that were, and the ECMs, the Energy Conservation Measures, that we're putting into the buildings at the end of the financing period. And these energy savings can only be used to fund energy efficiency in solar project under the construct that we're presenting tonight. So as our city manager mentioned, we feel that this is a prudent use of public resources that generates a fiscally sound payback to the city, meanwhile, giving us environmental paybacks to the community as well. So to summarize the project, and then Lisa Estrada will go over the details and tell you where we're going to make these capital investments. The total annual savings is $332,258. The simple payback on the project, 17.5 years. Our goal and target was to include anything in this assessment that gave us a 20-year or less payback. As it turned out, we were able to land at a 17.5-year. Although the financing term is 20 years, it'll be paid back within that timeframe. We looked at a much larger project. The contract for Amoresco, who we're entering into the agreement with, started out looking at over $10 million a project, but we had some very clear criteria and a very rigorous cross-functional team that looked at the payback, the acceptance of solar at these facilities, the ability to design it within our public use, and a variety of other constraints. We received information on all 23 facilities we looked at that we can use for energy conservation measures in the future, and we are going to make, if council approves this tonight, improvements at 16 of those. At least two sites will likely give us, and likely four of them will give us, net-zero facilities. And the total cost that we're presenting tonight is $6.3 million, 5.8 for the contract, and then the balance for the associated project costs. Net-zero, for the home audience, I'm pretty sure council knows, but net-zero is when you're looking at a building and you're looking at the energy that you're consuming, the amount of renewable energy that you're generating is basically the same. So you're in balance with energy production, energy consumption. And that's the goal. And hopefully, by the end of all this, Mrs. Estrada will have even more than that. Before I go on, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor and Counsel for time and attention you've spent on this, as we've discussed it through the year, and for your support last year in authorizing us to go forward. But I also want to thank and acknowledge those who have worked so diligently on the project. We had our executive management team, the, and all of us, including the city manager and the DCMs, our department directors, and a very detailed cross-functional team. So there's a lot of stars in that, and I'm not going to mention all of them right now. But I also wanted to mention our Amoresco consultants, Daniel Hunter, who's the Senior Account Executive, and Dan Herring, the Director of Business Development, who I believe are behind me in the audience. And they would give us, you know, answers at 10 o'clock at night. They would turn things around for us the very next day or the next week, and they're a very unusual, hard-working consultant team. So with that, our most hard-working of all is our Sustainability Economic and Efficiency Manager, who is even up on the rooftops examining this project. And then she'll turn it over to Brent Mattingly to describe 37R in a little bit more detail.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you, Carl. I think I'm going to use this napkin to wipe my tears because I'm supposed to be happy tonight with this project, but I'm also saddened by your departure. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Counsel, for this opportunity to finally bring this project forward. I think you'll be very pleased. So with that said, let me kind of set the stage for what we're going to talk about in the next few minutes. We're going to first outline the project goals, kind of what was the impetus for this conversation to even happen in the first place, a little bit about the process, what we've gone through for the past two years and experienced with our own internal analysis, what those selected projects, what we came out to have here before you tonight. It started out with a long menu list of items, or ECMs, like Susan alluded to earlier, energy conservation measures, but we dwindled it down to a manageable-sized project, which I hope you feel the same. We'll talk a little bit about the benefits of the city. There are some that are clearly direct financial benefits, but there's also indirect and other things that we can look forward to and celebrate as well. And then we'll kind of have Brent jump in and talk a little bit about the financing, and finally, the next steps. So the project goals. In my role as the city's Economic Efficiency and Sustainability Manager, I'm responsible for identifying sustainability projects and initiatives that would promote the city's environmental and financial stewardship. Projects like the one before you today generate safe, reliable, and long-term affordable power that achieves a balance between high-quality, long-term, low-cost energy while also considering the environmental impacts of providing those energy resources. This project will increase the efficient use of energy and will decrease the city's buildings' emissions and carbon footprint. It will also move us towards achieving the goals in the council-adopted Sustainability Action Plan, while also providing our residents, visitors, and employees the benefit of additional shade, which is very much needed. A little bit about the process. We talked about, back in 2005, when this conversation first started with an idea, and we went ahead and decided that there was something to look into in our city facilities. There was an opportunity to go ahead and move forward with a preliminary energy audit, which was very high-level but still telling as far as whether or not there's opportunity for energy efficiency and solar expansion opportunities. So we started with that, and then followed by that, when we saw that there was something there to pursue, we went ahead and went with a thorough investment-grade audit, or the IGA, is what we coined it here. And we did, again, like Susan mentioned, 23 city facilities, and at some point, we went ahead and added a couple more. We did Fire Fleet Services in addition to the PSAB building. So all in all, we audited very thoroughly, deep-dive, 23 city facilities. We went ahead and received those findings in the fall-winter timeframe from the consultant, and staff then got together, huddled together, and again, this was a cross-functional, very thorough, very collaborative effort from lots of folks, whether they're the executive team, director level, and staff level. So lots of people really scouring through these documents and analysis that came through. In that process, we went ahead and looked at things for their technical merits, their financial merits, their legal merits, as well as our operational, because that's very, very important. And again, we have so many different staff that are experts in their own areas, so whether it's construction, engineering, or facilities, energy, and so forth. So everyone really looked at this. And part of the city's project selection criteria, like Susan mentioned, was also looking at the return on investment, or the ROI. Specifically, city staff ensured that the project was cost-neutral and/or cash flow-positive, which it is, and that the ROI was less than 20 years, and that it could be completely self-funded through guaranteed energy savings. So also, we went ahead and, so now, we're going to go ahead and present to you, again, we had a menu list, a long list of ECMs, and this is what ultimately staff, based on the criteria I just mentioned, decided to present to you tonight. We looked at the Development Community Services Building. That's looking like having a solar-cover parking in front of DCSB. The Pinnacle Peak Patrol Services Building, at one point, the construction timeline and the timeline of this project wasn't quite gelling, so we went ahead and fortunately, towards the end of the audit, we were able to put that project in since Ed Strifler, who is looking at this or overseeing the construction of this project, was able to have it solar-ready. So it was a very easy thing to do, to go ahead and throw it in at the last minute, still having a good financial payback. Sunrise Mountain Library is one other very cool site because it is obviously an area of high use. We have lots of residents that come and go from that library. And what's really neat about that project is that it's going to be net-zero. So that's something that's really good, Susan defined it. It's the amount of energy that you're using offset by the amount of energy you're generating on-site. The other net-zero site, which is Fire Station 191, and that will also be net-zero. We also have Fire Station 195, 196, 197, and Beardsley Water Treatment Reclamation Facility. There's the potential that the Patrol Services Building can be also net-zero. Since it's not being occupied and we're basically relying on energy models, it's hard to say if that will be 100% a guarantee, but very, very likely. As well as Station 196, we're about 10% away from being net-zero. So we'll keep an eye on that and see if we can add that to our list of celebration for net-zero projects. The next couple slides are just some pictures to give you examples of what the solar layouts would look like. There's a combination of three different types of installations here. We have ground mount, which is something we already have at Beardsley now. It's currently a 60 kW solar array. And we also have the solar-covered parking, which is going to be especially beneficial, like I mentioned earlier. And then a little bit of the rooftop at the Pinnacle Peak Fire Station, as well as the Patrol Services Building will have a small array there. So these are just a couple, not all of the site layouts, but just to give you some examples there. Sunrise Mountain Library, again, right there on the right, and a 3D rendering of DCSB on the left. So now, we're going to jump into the lighting retrofits. This is a list of all the lighting retrofits that we will have interior and exterior lighting at all of these facilities here. And to talk a little bit about the financial benefits, we said a couple times how important it is that this project allows the city, for the city to pay for renewable energy and energy efficiency improvements for the next 20 years without placing an additional burden on the city's taxpayers. Energy savings will completely pay for this project, resulting in no net cost increase. The cost of this project is budget-neutral, and as I mentioned earlier, it actually cash-flow-positive to the city. The solar assets are owned by the city and are actually anticipated to generate solar energy savings beyond the 20-year financing period. And it's important to note that when we consider projects like these, operations and maintenance is a key factor. The good news is that not only does this project self-fund the operations and maintenance for the new proposed solar assets, but it also, the existing solar that we have at Beardsley. So that's a really good deal for us. So for now, I'll go ahead and switch gears here and have Brent talk to you a little bit about the financing aspect.
Sure, thank you, Lisa. So the construction of the solar improvements will be financed, we believe, through a lease purchase agreement, and the lighting improvements would be paid for through cash funding. And we alluded earlier to what we called CREBBS, Clean Renewable Energy Bonds. That's a federal government program that offers a interest rate subsidy to help reduce the cost of the solar projects. And despite its name, it's not really a bond. It's actually, again, just an incentive tool that the federal government offers through the Internal Revenue Service where we would receive an annual interest rate subsidy or rebate to us. But in order to apply for that federal program, the mayor and council are required to adopt a resolution, which is actually the next item on your agenda this evening. We're just covering them both in the same staff report. That resolution will provide staff with the That resolution will provide staff with the authorization to move forward, including authorization to make application to the Internal Revenue Service, authorization to take steps necessary to actually proceed with borrowing the funds needed to construct those solar improvements. We anticipate bringing those legal documents back to you in August after your summer break. It also declares the city's intent to possibly reimburse certain project costs that are incurred between now and the time of the financing taking place, authorization to take any other steps necessary to pursue this project, and declaring an emergency. So Lisa's going to talk on the next slide about actually the two agenda items before you this evening, the Amoresco contract, as well as the resolution. And staff's recommendation on those is really, as Susan mentioned, based upon staff's belief that this is a prudent use of city resources. As Lisa mentioned, the, we're spending money today, paying the utility companies' utility bills to operate these facilities. Once these improvements are in place, we will not be paying as much on those utility bills. We would take that money from each department's budget line item and instead use it to pay for the cost of these improvements.
Thank you, Brent. So Vice Mayor Edwards, council, so before you are two action items, 36R and 37R. And one is, of course, to allow us the, the opportunity to enter into an energy performance contract with Amoresco to install the energy efficiency retrofits, as well as the solar. And we're also looking for a total budget amendment of 6.3, which includes the breakdown there between 5.892 for the solar project and lighting retrofit costs, as well as the second amount, 415,000, for all the ancillary costs that are associated with this, all of which will be covered under the, this project and paid for through savings. And we also recommend adoption of Resolution 2017-66, which allows Brent Mattingly, our finance director, to enter into a lease-purchase agreement while also submitting the CREBS application to the IRS.
And with that, we conclude our staff report. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Comments? Councilman Finn?
Yeah, just one quick question. How does the, how does the guarantee work? Is there a measurement and verification that happens to ensure that there's a guarantee and we have actually gotten the savings that we were guaranteed?
Yes, Councilmember Finn, that is correct. After the, so, Amoresco, that's part, that's included in the contract and the overall project, but that is part of it, measurement and verification. In addition to that, we will also be doing our own internal measurement and verification to ensure that there's consistency and alignment with what they're saying and what we're saying. At the end of the 12 months, we will, probably before that December deadline, we will start looking at those figures together. This is a collaborative project. It's not like they come in, build, and then leave. It is a partnership. It is a long-term partnership between the two of us to ensure that, that we're actually getting that. And in addition to that, if the, if the, if the, if the savings are not there as they have promised and guaranteed that, then they basically have two options. Either they write us a check for the difference, or they come back in and install or add additional ECMs, energy conservation measures, to make up the difference, so that we are never having to dip into other money, if you will, to, to make up the difference.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bensbacher?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, thank you. You answered my question about the guarantee. And you may have mentioned this, I'm sorry if I missed it, there's a 17-and-a-half-year payback, right? That's what we're anticipating based on the savings. Did you mention the life expectancy of the solar equipment?
Thank you, Councilmember Bensbacher. That's a great question. It's actually, we're expecting to have it at least 30 years. That's the expectation, yes.
30 years.
Or greater.
Okay, so the initial investment is this 6-plus million, right? That's the, the cost. But we will realize the savings of 330,000 per month, is what you're anticipating.
Per year.
Per year. I'm sorry. Okay, I think that's my, all my questions. But thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this and the research and helping us understand all the different aspects of a project like this. And it's, it's just, it's creative, it's forward-thinking. If we can do something like this without having to, you know, go to the taxpayers, if the investment, the savings actually pays for this project, and we get some shade and some other things, that's fantastic. Great work. Thank you so much for your commitment to this.
Thank you, Councilmember Bensbacher.
Councilman Hunt? Councilmember Hunt?
Yeah, I didn't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you. My goodness, when you guys presented this to me in my office the other day, I was just blown away. Thank you to all of you, and I guess to the other staff that worked, to the directors and so on. But Lisa spent hours in attics and on roofs and in tunnels and where the faint will not go. She really gets into her job. And I, I just think this is so amazing, because it is forward-thinking. And this is where we're headed. This is the direction that we're headed. And for us to be there now and to be looking at installing this and it paying for itself, you know, that's just amazing. Susan and Carl and whoever else was responsible for promoting Lisa to this position a couple of years ago and, and sending her to school again, it's going to pay off over and over. And this is just a really big jackpot for us, I think. And thank you, Lisa, for your, not just dedication, but your passion for this. And Susan, I think you were the one that saw this in Lisa and nurtured it. And so thank you for your vision also. And I just couldn't be prouder. I just think this is great.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. But it's really a testament to so many people, really cross-functional effort and project. A lot of great minds came together. Thank you.
How many people went in the attics with you and?
Good six of us. John Livinggood, for sure.
A lot of you did.
Helped us up there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I had the opportunity to meet with this team about a week ago, and we talked for about an hour or so regarding this program. And it's pretty obvious, I know you've been working on this a couple of years, and you had your ducks in a row, and you really explained the program very clearly to me. We talked about net-zero. We talked about renting the equipment versus purchasing the equipment, and the whole energy savings thing. This is kind of the essence of sustainability, and my hope is that it's a good first step that we can continue to move forward a program like this. I do have one question about Amoresco. They're, they're going to come out, I think Brent, you answered this for me, but I want to make sure I understand it clearly. So Amoresco's going to come out, and they're going to do a, an energy audit, and they're going to tell us how much we can reduce our energy. So let's say they tell us we can reduce it by 35%, and we only reduce it 30%. My understanding is then they write the check, the difference between the 35 and the 30, they write a check to make up the difference?
Right, so they've already done that audit, and they spent a lot of time and looked at a tremendous amount of data at each of these facilities to come up with their projections of the energy savings, the energy reduction that will happen at each of these facilities with these improvements. And as part of the contract, they're guaranteeing that the energy savings will be what is promised in the contract. If it is not, then the value of that, they, as Lisa had mentioned earlier, we can make some changes, or they can make some changes to those improvements or compensate us for the equivalent difference.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, Lisa. When we were talking earlier today about them, one of the particular facilities, the library, Sunrise Library, my, my only concern with that one is the line-of-sight issues. You know, you have residents on one side that have a really good view of the, of the city park, and I'm just concerned that maybe by putting up those, those units, that are we going to really diminish any line of sight? I just want to make sure that we're working with the residents to make sure that they have a little bit of input as to, you know, maybe the design, or maybe some trellises or something to really kind of hide some of the, the work that's, that's there. Because, you know, they, they bought in that area for a reason, and I just don't, you know, some of the high school, get, get some complaints from the Liberty High School residents that they complain about the solar in the, in the park. And I know it's a necessity, and it's a great program. I just want to make sure that we've got, you know, full knowledge from, from the residents of what's going on as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Edwards. We'll definitely take that into consideration and work with our internal staff to go through the appropriate channels to make sure that, that we're working with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Does anybody have, have any more questions on 20, 36R? Do I have a motion?
I move we accept this.
I move we accept this.
Second?
Second.
And 36R passes unanimously. And in conjunction with that, we have 37R. Do I, can I just read that one and just go on? So, so 37R is a resolution authorizing an application and financing for energy efficiency projects. Since we've already had the report, does council have any questions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All in favor, please vote. And 37R passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the call to public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please commit, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker podium. Because of the requirements of state open meeting laws, the city council cannot authorize to discuss or take any action on issues raised by public comment until a later meeting. Please be aware that your comments will be noted, and you have three minutes to speak. Do we have any speaker request forms? Okay, so we have no speaker request forms, okay. Thank you. We have one request to speak from Sam Owen. Sam, you know, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sam Owen, 8943 West Quail Avenue. I wish to take this time to properly give my farewell words to the council. Due to my schedule conflicts from the previous meeting, meant that I couldn't be here for the end of the meeting. I am extremely grateful for the council, and also in my family's decision for moving here to Peoria, not only for the community opportunities that the city's given us and the amenities, but also for the city's attention and its care for the youth of Peoria. I now have the statistics that I was trying to quote at the previous meeting, and 28.4% of the population of the city is under the age of 18. If you run the numbers on that based on the current population estimates, that means that there are over 46,000 of the youth of Peoria. That is a very large number, whose voices would not be heard from without the city's efforts to represent them through programs like the Youth Advisory Board, through the Youth Liaison Program, and other such positions. Both of those two, I had the pleasure of taking part in. I urge the council to continue to fight for this representation of the youth, as it will lead to substantial effects within the city, within the state, towards the future. For one, if you look at, it'll create a higher proportion of politically literate people of my generation who are more willing to take part in politics, pursue it as a career, or just become more active in the government around them. It will also inspire more of the youth to realize just how influential their voice can be in the world around them if they only put in the work to make sure their voice is heard. So once again, I just want to thank the council for the opportunities that they have provided me in these positions. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from the city manager. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Edwards. Just a couple of items. And Chris Hawkes will have the first presentation on the general plan update. While Chris is coming down, I just want to recognize Tammy Shreve for her work on the items that were on the consent agenda this evening, the, the finalization of the code update. That was an enormous amount of work. Tammy led that work, and I just want to recognize your great work, Tammy. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Good evening, Vice Mayor Edwards, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief update of where we are in the general plan. We're about eight months into the general plan update of a process that from start to finish, finish being ratification, is about a two-year process. So I'd like to focus tonight on, as you can see on the screen, we're within phase two and three, which is the work we've been doing over the last spring, which has been all the public outreach work. So I'm going to give you some results on that. But just to step back a little bit for the viewing public, a general plan is what we call the foundational document that, that guides growth and development decisions in the city. It typically has a 20-year horizon and beyond, so when you look at the tagline of the general plan, you'll see that it'll say "General Plan 2040." It seems like quite a distance out there, but when you think about, you know, 2000, it really doesn't, it wasn't, wasn't that long ago, so it goes pretty quick. A little bit about the general plan, too. There are, it provides policy guidance on a number of topics, everything from, you know, water resources, land use, circulation, housing, and so forth. And so the state of Arizona requires the cities the size of Peoria to address at least 17 elements. We're actually going to address more elements than that. And another thing about general plans in, in the state of Arizona is it requires a general plan to be ratified by its voters at least every 10 years. So it's very unique. I think we're still the only state in the country that requires that, but we'll be marching towards that finish line as we gain public input. So we've had a very strong spring. I think at the onset, when I first came to council, I mentioned that, you know, we have to touch a number of different ways to reach our citizens, to gather input. It's no longer enough to have a couple of community meetings, and assume that's where we get all the input. We have to build a, an appropriate digital platform. We have to push out our input through digital means and also through just a variety of sources. So I'll talk about some of that, out those outreach efforts. We did have two rounds of community workshops. We had three workshops in, in the southern, central, and northern portions of the city. The first meeting was held in March, and we had a total of 28 people. We recently concluded the second round of workshops, same locations, also had 28 people, incidentally, at those. We also had online surveys, and where we asked questions of our citizens, questions that we also had asked at the, at the public workshops. We had 898 responses. So I think that says a lot about how we, as a society, not only access information but provide input. Then, incidentally, we do have a survey I want to mention, I'll, I'll talk about the website at the end, but we have a survey that's open right now. We're asking questions to our citizens about some interest in their neighborhoods and neighborhood-centric questions. So that survey's open right now, and we're pushing that out. We also provide project updates. We've been in front of, I think this is council, P&amp;Z, and youth, but we've been in front of all, you know, most of our boards and commissions to provide them regular updates of where we are in the process. And then finally, I'll talk about what we're calling pop-up events. These are events that we went to in the spring, different events, either at the schools or some of the special events, and we'll talk about that. We did get quite a bit of responses as well on an activity we called stormboarding, where essentially we place boards out there, we're asking questions of our citizens. And so as they come by, we engage them, and they give us input on those questions. We also established two advisory committees. So the first one is called the GPAC, or General Plan Advisory Commission, Committee. This is comprised of several of our boards and commissions. So that includes Economic Development Advisory Board, our Planning Commission, our Youth Advisory Board, Parks Board, and Historic Preservation Commission. We also have representation from Peoria Unified School District, as well as Deer Valley Unified School District. So they make up our GPAC, our advisory committee, and help provide us guidance as we go along with the process. We also have a TAC, a Technical Advisory Committee, and it's comprised of, as you can see, many or most of our city departments and divisions throughout the city, so they help us as well. In a minute, I'll talk about some of our youth outreach. That's very important. As we look out to 2040, the, the youth, of course, are going to be the, our next citizens, citizens that come of age during this term, so it's very important to get their perspective. We did have a project that I'll talk about in a minute with a, with a sixth-grade classroom in, in community in Country Meadows, very successful project. We see that project being portable to other schools in the future. We also provided information on the general plan update through several print and electronic media platforms. We utilized the mayor's message, council e-blast. We had articles in the Peoria Times and the City News. We provided utility bill inserts and flyers and fact sheets that we sent out electronically. And then the digital media, I'd like to thank Jennifer Stein in the Office of Communications. They've been terrific in trying to help us push out the word. You can see some of the, the means that we've tried to push out, Facebook, Twitter, city website, emails, and our project website, which I'll talk about in a, in a second. So we really tried to hit, you know, various different ways to get input and get information out. out to our citizens. One of the things I want to talk about is, through the community meetings and some of the input through the surveys we got, what are some of the primary themes that we heard about? One of the questions that came out, and some of the themes that came out, is what are the three top items that citizens like about Peoria? What is about Peoria that makes it a great place? Almost universally, people said, "Well, you know, it's a large city, but we have a family-oriented character. It's very important. We're a community of safe neighborhoods, and we've got very good quality schools in the city." We also asked them, "What are the things that we think we should include in the update?" So those that attended and responded said that we're a very strong, fiscally strong city. We should continue to, continue management in that direction. We should have focused growth, and meaning that growth should be encouraged and promoted in the right locations, whether that's infill development, or whether that's growth that's in or near where existing infrastructure is. And we should also be a city that continues to be sustainable and environmentally friendly. And then we asked the question, too, if I can get that to pop up. There we go. What are some top strategies that we should emphasize in our update? One of them that came up was incentives for redevelopment, encourage reinvestment. How do we incentivize or promote development within the core or areas that are near infrastructure? We need to provide quality jobs so that we align our workforce with the jobs of the future, and reduce outcommuting, and also that we provide adequate facilities so as we grow, we keep up with all the required public facilities. All right. I want to talk about some of the youth outreach. So if you direct your attention to the top of the screen, some of those photos, we did a stormboarding exercise with our youth advisory board, asked them questions about the city, what they saw as assets, and where we could move in the city. We also, then if you look at the bottom, we also worked with the Country Meadows Elementary School with a sixth-grade gifted class. And so we worked on a program with their teachers. And what that program was called was Build a City. And so what the students were instructed to do was to build a realistic, sustainable city. So in that project, they were asked to develop a logo, a slogan, and then design their city using green or sustainability principles. So at a couple opportunities, our planning and some of our traffic engineering staff went out, we met with the teachers, we met with the students, and talked to them about the project, gave them some advice on that, and helped them develop their ideas and put them on paper. In May was the culmination of this project. They invited the parents out, some of the teachers out, and we had several, I think we had eight groups that presented their cities to some of the planners and the traffic engineering staff that we then sat in judgment and commented on their project. So what you can see on the right is the winning team. They were, called themselves the City of Miles. And so you can't really see their slogan, but what it says is, "Once you are in mile, you always smile." So that's their logo for the city. I think a very nice, very nice logo indeed. And as I indicated earlier, working with Peoria Unified School District, they're looking at possibly incorporating this project throughout the district. I think everybody saw a lot of value in this one. And then I indicated earlier the pop-up events. So what you see on the photo is stormboards, as we call them, but photos of various events that we're at. We were at five events in May. We were at the Peoria Music Series in Sunrise Mountain Library. We went to the Old Town Arts and Culture Festival, Peoria Pop-Up Dinner Party in Old Town, Planet Palooza, which actually was our biggest, which we had our biggest attendance there. And actually, the board you're looking at with all the notes on there, that was from Planet Palooza, great event. And then also Foodstock 2017, the sports complex. So through these pop-up events, we got a chance to talk to citizens. We got over 400 responses on, again, the topics that we were asking for input from. So it was a very, very good, very good event. One of the things we're working on now is what we're calling a map atlas or a community profile. So what it is, is it's basically a point-in-time demographic and development trend baseline for the city. So this will help us understand the different variables in the city, perhaps things we need to focus on. So right now, we're gathering that information. We're working with our advisory committees. It's going to be a project that's going to be designed, so the information's going to be very user-friendly. I'll show you a couple photos here, very easy to read. It's going to try to point out things that are salient. So you can see some of the chapters that we have here and the look of the document, but it'll try to point out things that are of interest and are salient on the different topic areas. And so try to make it just very, very digestible. And in terms of the chapters, I mentioned earlier that we're developing at least 17 elements. So rather than have a single element, we're trying to organize them into themes, into topic areas. And so these topic areas are not only, you know, we do this because within these chapters are a lot of overlapping principles, but also we want to be transparent and also descriptive in the direction we're moving. So the chapters we're looking at is growth and mobility, conservation and sustainability, economic competitiveness, healthy neighborhoods, arts, culture, and education, and public services. And then I indicated earlier some of the infographics that we're going to use to try to tell the story of Peoria, our baseline. So you can see a couple of examples there, everything from single-family permits, housing values, what does our population look like, and so forth. So there's, you know, the document's probably going to have 40-plus pages or so, and we should be nearing completion of that, probably within the next month or two. And then finally, I just wanted to give you a sense of what our next steps will be. So after we complete the map atlas, which is phase three, the next phase is really going to be the big, tough work, and that's developing the draft strategies, the policies, the implementation plan, working on the land use map and the circulation map. And as you can imagine, there'll be a number of public outreach events that will culminate in the fall, as well as coming back to the council and our boards and giving you an update. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions? Councilman Binsbacher?
Question and a comment. How long will the survey be available on the website? How long will the website be up? Through the duration of the project till it's over? And how much of this information is on the website?
Councilmember Binsbacher, great question. The survey just went online today. In the last time, we kept it up for about three weeks. Let me find out the answer to that, and we'll post that information on the website. And by the way, let me just point out, the website is on the screen there, www.planpeoriaaz.com. So if a citizen goes to that website, not only can you provide input on the general plan, you can, you can look at all the materials that we've developed so far. You can look at the, you know, so it's a lot of information on the website to look at.
Thank you. So in my comment, I really just want to thank you and the whole team for your effort. I've been to a couple of these workshops, and they're interactive workshops, and my initial reaction was, gosh, I wish more people were here. It's so much effort, and you can see from the presentation just how much has gone into it. But I was at another event where I spoke and I talked about us and our general plan, and, you know, approximately how many people we were able to actually get to participate. And I had an elected official from another city follow me out and say, "We're doing the same thing." How in the world did you, are you making those numbers? And I was so proud of that, because people just aren't responding. And we know, we've tried so many different things, and, you know, it's just hard to get people to put in the time and participate in these things. But comparatively speaking, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to stop trying, ever. But so much effort has gone into this, and I think the results are tremendous as far as, you know, what the engagement has been. To hear from other cities that, gosh, how did you make that happen? And then I heard from a constituent that, how did you find consultants that are representing your city with the same passion that your employees do? How did you do that? Which was from a constituent, which is a huge, huge compliment. So this is so important, and, you know, well, no one will ever be able to say that we did not try, as a city, to engage citizens to be part of the future of Peoria. But I encourage the public and council members and everyone to share this plan, peoriaaz.com, and be heard, and fill out the information and be part of the progress. But thank you to everyone involved. It's just, it's been a great effort.
Great. Thank you for that.
Chris, this presentation you've done tonight is, I was trying to take notes, but is this on exactly, or could you download this to me or send this to me or something?
Councilmember Hunt, I certainly can. In fact, all the materials that we develop, all the presentations, they're all posted on the website, including the schedules and everything else. But I'll send it to you.
I was mostly interested in the things people liked about Peoria, incentives for development, quality jobs, youth outreach, those things that I thought I could apply to my own neighborhoods and in my thinking. So it was actually off of a page or two in here. Will those be presented just like this?
Councilmember Hunt, so I provided a synopsis tonight, but I can tell you what, all the comments that we've received during the process, all the notes that have been taken at the public meetings, that's all on the website in detail.
Okay. I can access it then, with help, probably. Thank you.
Chris, I had one question. Can you go to the map, the atlas map on phase three where you had like a breakdown of, there you go, with the population, everything else, under 55? Can you maybe add like the millennials and the youth in here as far as like the, because as we were hearing from, oh, 36,000 right there, so 46,000. I just think that's important to have out there, so the youth know that they're definitely being represented. And I love the fact that you're reaching out to the schools, the colleges. I know that I went to one of your presentations when you did with the youth advisory group, and they were really engaged and had some ideas that I think you and I were even saying we didn't even think of, because it's just something that we're not thinking of every single day. So it's in their mindset every day, but not in ours.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Edwards, good comments. We do have a page or two that's devoted specifically to our population stratification, so we can dive in more detail as to some of those different, you know, different groups.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Chris. Very good. The next presentation will be from Laura Ingigniri, our Human Resources Director. And as the council is well aware, employee wellness is very important to us, and we've recently received some recognition for our wellness program. Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council. We're kind of excited to tell you a little bit about what we've done in employee wellness and also share with you the awards that we have received. Of course, everything that we do under wellness is consistent with your policy goal to maintain and enhance our employer choice status, and in alignment with our strategic plan for HR that you approved last year. And we think that we've made a lot of great progress in employee wellness. Here's a few ideas of what we've done the last 12 months, and I'll just highlight a few. First, biometric screenings. Of course, those are the screenings where they look at key measures like blood pressure, weight, body mass, cholesterol. We have increased our participation in those screenings by 17% this year. We also implemented Weight Watchers at Work. And to give you an idea of the impact that has had, those that participated lost an average of 10 pounds in the 12 weeks that they participated in the Weight Watchers program. We've also increased the frequency of which we do the onsite screening, so what we call the mom van and the pop van, and also the skin cancer screenings. And throughout those screenings, we, this last year, we identified six suspicious findings as a result of those screenings. So hopefully, those employees, after receiving that information, went back to their doctors and took care of those issues. We also have increased our wellness seminars. We do a lot of great lunch-and-learn type things where we talk about eating healthy and building our strength and stress management and that type of thing. And then lastly, I want to point out, we participate each year in the Great American Smokeout event. And we don't just focus on smokers. We focus on any unhealthy habit that someone wants to give up, and we ask that they try and do that on that day. So people have noticed what we're doing, and we're very proud. And one of the reasons that we're proud is we received this Platinum Level Healthy Arizona Work Site Award. And that's something that we also received last year. We got a Gold Level last year, and this year, we are at the Platinum Level. And this is given by the Arizona Department of Public Health in Maricopa County, and it recognizes organizations making efforts to positively affect the health and well-being of employees, families, and the community. Just to give you an idea, there were 90 organizations that were selected for some level for this award. They start with like a Copper Level, and then they go all the way up to Platinum. And there were only 11 that were selected for the Platinum Level, and only two cities that were selected, and we were one of those. So we're very proud. And secondly, we were recently ranked number 10 in Phoenix Business Journal's Healthiest Employers. Last year, we were number 18, and now we are number 10, and we are the only city on that list of healthiest employers for midsize. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I do want to, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I do want to just point out that there's a number of staff in Human Resources that have been involved in this wellness program, but we really couldn't have done it without the support and leadership of Mr. Swenson as well as all of you. I think these programs are important, and I appreciate the fact that you're supportive of all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Laura.
Thank you.
Next is the video of upcoming events. Vice Mayor, council, that is all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Now we have reports from the city council. Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On Friday, May 19th, I attended the Peoria Fire Medical Department Awards. It was held at the Colonnade. It was a wonderful event. A lot of firefighters received awards, and kind of makes you aware of what our firefighters, the type of risk that they take every day on their job, and it was a great event. On Saturday, the 20th, I attended the firefighter's charity's Fired Up Car Show. Donations at this event fund several scholarships, including the Johnny Valentine Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $2,500 for any student wishing to attend Glendale Community College seeking a career in the fire service or the medical field. They had, I'm going to guess, close to 100 cars out there, beautiful vehicles of my generation, and it was a lot of fun. They had music, they had food. It was selling t-shirts. It was just a great event. Firefighters always do a real good job with this. On Thursday, May 25th, I attended the Take Me Home Huey Documentary Film by Light Horse Legacy. It was quite interesting to see. It's, as we complete our Veterans Memorial, one of the things that we're going to be doing is putting a Huey helicopter out there. And this movie was a documentary on the Take Me Home Huey, the one that the city had last year, that he painted the entire helicopter, and it gave the artist's idea of why he painted it, the way he painted it. They interviewed a lot of Vietnam veterans. They showed some actual footage of the Vietnam War, and what that showed me was there was just a huge amount of chaos in that war. We're trying to get a disc of that so that we can show it to our, to our staff here in Peoria. It was really quite compelling, and I would like to see it again, like to see our staff see it. On Monday, May 29th, I was asked to speak, give a Veterans Day, I'm sorry, a Memorial Day speech at Westbrook Village. The event lasted about an hour, and afterwards, we had coffee and donuts and things, and it was, it was a nice event. Westbrook Village does this every year, and I think this is the third year. So I was honored to be asked to make the speech, and I thought it went very well. City, Westbrook Village did a great job of this. And then on Saturday, June 3rd, they had a change of command ceremony at Luke Air Force Base for the 56th Fighter Wing. This is always pretty interesting. At these events, there's a lot of pomp and circumstance and a lot of saluting going on, but it's always great to get out to Luke Air Force Base and see what they, you know, what they do for our country, and it was nice to be out there. I represent the city on the Fighter Country Partnership, and that's why I get to go to these events over at Luke. Tonight, I'd like to give a shout out to the city clerk's office. It seems like about every three months, we're, we as council people are required to do all kinds of reports that go down to the county, and they change them every three months. And so we get, we ask the city clerks, at least I ask the city clerk's office for help and assistance, and they're always very gracious about helping us out. And I'd like to give a shout out to Rhonda, Linda, and Natalie, and your entire team. And I'd like to give a shout out to Rhonda, Linda, and Natalie, and your entire team. You guys do a great job. I know you do records retention, you do records requests, and there's a number of other things that you do, and your department runs very well, and I always appreciate your help. You guys are always very gracious. So thank you. And the last thing I have is I chose tonight, today, not to speak at Carl's retirement party, I am choosing to speak tonight. And one of many, one of many of Carl's leadership qualities has been his recognition of getting our city through the economic downturn. You heard a lot about that today, including our mayor saying that that was a huge accomplishment, and it was. And while I agree it was a tremendous accomplishment, I kind of see what Carl does just a little differently. Y'all know the saying, "Jack of all trades, master of none." Well, I believe for the city manager's position, it's master of all trades. In addition to running the day-to-day city, Carl has had to perform his tasks with professionalism and with integrity, and he has certainly accomplished that. He had to perform under the highest of ethical standards and set an example for the rest of the staff. He has to know the budget, the CIP, economic development, how all the departments work, and how they all fit in with other departments. He has to command the respect of his office, and yet make sure his department heads are comfortable coming to him with thoughts and ideas, and know he will be receptive. And he must ensure that Peoria remains a player in the West Valley by promoting our city in regional efforts. Make no mistake, Peoria is a player in the West Valley. We have a lot of credentialed staff, probably the most in the country, and we have many accredited departments in the city. It's very difficult to get accreditation, I've said that many times. And what that means is that the departments are operating at the highest level possible. And what that does is trickle down to our citizens. It means they're getting the best service possible, and that's a really big deal. One of the most important things the city manager must do is hire good, qualified people and keep them employed. We must remain an employer of choice. Carl has had tremendous success in this area. For example, we have three heads to be promoted, department heads to be promoted to deputy city managers, and one will soon become, or has become, our next city manager. Our staff remains the best in the West Valley, without question. In the five years I've been at this job, I have yet to hear a single negative comment about our staff and how they deal with citizens. That's an amazing accomplishment. And this accomplishment has happened under Carl's leadership. And after all that, then he has the seven of us to deal with. And that's not an easy task, because we all, we have seven different personalities. Each of us represent about 27,000 citizens in our city, and sometimes they ask for things that are difficult to give them. But while he's doing his day-to-day business, it's not unusual for one of us to knock on his door and stick our head in and say, "Hey, Carl, I wonder if you could help me out with this?" And so it isn't just saying, "Yes, I'll get it done, Bill." You have to look at budget issues and how are we going to pay for it, and a whole number of things. But in my time working with Carl, he's always been able to get that done for me. So Carl, your accomplishments have been many, your leadership unquestioned, and your DNA will remain in this city for decades to come. So many years ago, I asked Terry Ellis, our former city manager before Carl, if he liked retirement. And he pondered it for a while, and Terry's, his own sense of humor said to me, "I love being retired. I get paid to sleep late." I, on the other hand, am a napper. So Carl, in your retirement, I hope you get to sleep late or take an occasional nap. You have certainly earned it, and you deserve it. Good luck to you and Darlene for a long and happy retirement.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Patena. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Benzbacher.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Very nice. Carl, I did speak today, but I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for gracing Peoria with your tremendous leadership and leaving us in such great hands, really. I want to thank or congratulate our Peoria Leadership Institute graduates, and for those of you that stayed, thank you so much for doing that and seeing this meeting through. But I really do appreciate it. I know it's nine weeks of, you know, one evening a week, and that's a big commitment. And we thank you for your time and dedication in wanting to learn more about our city in different ways that you can get involved. And maybe you're already involved, but you just, you want to learn more and continue to do great work. So thank you for that. I'm going to go ahead and congratulate, we have folks, a group graduating from the Citizens' Police Academy as well. I won't be able to attend that, but that's another 12-week program, more citizens committed to learning how our city functions. We have the Youth Citizens Police Academy, and we had a Citizens' Fire Academy. It's just, it warms my heart to know that so many people are so interested in their city and wanting to learn more and contribute however they can. It's important that we understand how it all works, and there's so much to it. So thank you all for your time and commitment. Our youth council member, Sam, the pleasure is all ours, really. You inspire us to keep doing what we're doing, and it was truly our honor. Thank you. I'm going to end it right there. It's been a great, great day in Peoria, and I know we have many more to look forward to. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn.
Thank you. I'm feeling a bit under the weather, so I'm going to keep this brief. I do want to congratulate the Peoria PLI graduates, graduations, that's amazing. So happy that you got to go through that. And I wanted to share some of the comments that I heard at my table about how wonderful the staff was too, because it was, it was really nice to hear how great the staff did in presenting things. And one of the people at the table mentioned that, actually two people at the table mentioned that when staff didn't know the answer, they freely admitted, "I don't know the answer to that question, but I will find out." And by gosh, they found out and came back. So a lot of accolades for the staff, and it's greatly appreciated by all of us how much time and effort that you all put into that, and I thank the citizens for their interest. Carl, I did speak my piece today. I wish you all the best, and if you find me knocking on the door of that lake house with a fishing pole in my hand.
Play pickleball.
I'm hoping you got a cold beer in that fridge. So Jeff, congratulations to you, sir. It's such a nice testament to know that we had two great candidates that you have helped develop. I don't think a lot of cities would probably see that. They're going to go out, and they're going to go outside, and I think it's a testament to what you've done and the way that you've developed the team here and the direction that this city is going, and I thank you for that. You make our jobs pretty easy sometimes. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, John. Well, I bet you're going to miss us sticking our head in the door, aren't you? Just to interrupt your TV or your fishing or whatever. Just think about the good old days of that knock on the door. Of course, Bill's the only one that did that, so. Okay, it seems like it's been forever since we've had a meeting, and I've got this whole list, and I'm going to try to be very brief. But I want to start with Sam. Thank you very, very much. You have, from day one, you expressed yourself eloquently, but I've watched you grow, and tonight you made us proud with just the way you said everything and the fact that I know that the time spent with you was, will magnify itself 100 times over, so thank you. And you reminded me too that we do have other programs for our youth. The West Valley Explorer Academy just graduated some Peoria students who are interested in exploring the police opportunities. And Maely left. Maely will be one of, Maely Acosta will be one of our youth liaisons, and she left. But I wanted to congratulate her on her girl state, going to girl state. That's a huge, huge compliment and a feather in her cap. It'll do wonders for her in applying to colleges and universities. And I think we're going to find with Cassidy and Maely, we're going to have two more real winners here up on the dais with us. You know, one of these days, they're not going to need us at all. Did you figure that out? They're just going to, they're going to rise up and take over. I loved it Saturday morning. I spent at the McDonald's. I like doing that anyway, but I had a reason for being there. We had coffee with a cop, and we had four of Peoria's finest there, Benny, Pina, Marcel Spalding, Brandon Sheffert was there taking pictures, and Bruce Walls even stopped in just for a few minutes. And I would guess we probably had, they moved around a lot, so they were hard to count, but I think 60 to 75 people over the course of a couple of hours that came in. And I really want to thank the McDonald's for opening themselves up for that, because basically you had enough to eat there, you didn't have to buy anything. And a girl went around filling coffee cups, and there were pies and cookies, some other things to eat. So it was really nice. And these guys were so charming and so just down to earth, and you could tell that the, oh, hi Benny, I didn't see you there. Don't let this go to your head, okay? They were just genuinely engaged with the people, and you could see the people just beamed after they got up close and personal. And Karen, thank you for coming out too. And Carlo was there also, spent the whole morning. Okay, let me see what's important here. Fire it up. Bill, you mentioned it. I do not know why any car club would choose me to choose the cars that were going to win. Somebody said, "Well, what do you like?" And I said, "Red." And I like Volkswagen, so it was a red Volkswagen that won. But, no, really, I think one of my shows was red. But it was fun. It was very, very hot that day. It was an unusually hot day for as early as it was. But it was so much fun, and you just felt guilty walking by these guys and looking at them. A lot of times I would pretend to be riding so they didn't know I wasn't going to vote for their car, because you can tell it's like their life, that's their baby there. And I have to say, they were really, really nice. Back to the youth for just a minute, I don't have this stuff in order, I guess. Hart Pantry. Hart Pantry is one of our not-for-profits that supplies food to homeless kids. And just because it's summer and kids don't go to school doesn't mean that their life changes completely. Kids are lucky if their life changes and they get to go on summer vacation in Disneyland or something. But unfortunately, dozens and dozens of our high school students do not have a place that they know for sure they're going to sleep every night. They couch surf or they sleep in somebody's car or whatever, and they're hungry. So if you know anybody that's in that situation, send them to the community center, because that's where the Hart Pantry drops off their food. And my assistant and I went and volunteered at the Hart Pantry one day, and they don't just get like what can of green beans or something. I mean, they get really good meals with snacks, things that kids are actually going to like. So this is an older group. Bill, I think you and John are real familiar with that Hart Pantry group. And it's senior citizens, and they just do this out of the goodness of their heart, and they've got quite a mechanism for collecting that food. Firefighters, our firefighters are deployed all over the state right now with the different fires, and they keep calling us because we have good equipment, and they know we have good, well-trained men and women. I enjoyed kicking off the Maine Library Reading Event. It was called Hunt's Garden, and got to show them to put the little seeds in the cups and take home, but the idea was plant the seed of reading. And so the kids went through, they absolutely loved it. Back to firefighters. Congratulations to Hunter Clare, Captain Hunter Clare. I also was at the awards dinner that night, but I had another thing I had to go to at Huntington, so I had to check out early. But I was so pleased to read later that Captain Hunter Clare had received the Johnny Valentine Award. That is the highest overall award for a firefighter in our city. Johnny Valentine was a former firefighter who gave his life in the line of duty. Theater Works. If you have little kids or know anybody who does, and their kids are driving them crazy, and, well, that would be anybody that had little kids, I guess, but send them to Theater Works. They've got summer camps from age four to through high school, and they're not that expensive, and there are scholarships available if you're seeing, it's really not where my money can go. It's so worth it to have those kids away from you for a while and to know that they're in a really safe environment, a really creative environment. And their lives will never be the same after they've been in a theater-type situation. So I think I'm at the end. And look, I even had already marked out some that I decided I wasn't going to talk about. I'm done.
You sure?
Well, I could go back to my list where, yeah, no, that's okay. Mike says I'm done.
Mike says you're done. Well, I just, I just have a few comments. I just wanted to congratulate all of the members of the PLI. You guys did a phenomenal job of going through the organizational skills through the city, and we really opened up the city so that you guys understand what we deal with every single day. And it takes a lot of encouragement from all staff members to get engaged and for citizens to get engaged. I just really want to thank you guys for participating. To all the new members, the new members of the boards and commissions, to Maely and Cassidy, congratulations on your appointments to the Youth Advisory Liaison. You have some big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that you guys will be able to step into that. And then finally, Mr. Swenson, Carl. I didn't speak at your, at your going away party today, and there was a reason for that, because I got a little tearful, to be quite honest. There was some really good testament, and when your daughter was speaking via satellite from New York, I just about lost it. But your work in the city is unparalleled. And you, believe it or not, you were the second person that ever welcomed me to council. And you always said, "My door is always open to you," and I took that to heart. And I was one of those people that was knocking on your door, asking questions, but I was asking those questions because I really valued your opinion. And so I took a lot of the stuff that you, that we talked about and used those in my decision-making sometimes on this dais, and so I thank you for that. And though your work is done here, you have a whole new chapter, because I'm sure that even though your list here is now down to nothing, Darlene probably has a list that is going to be a mile long for you up in Washington. So on behalf of my wife, Brendan, myself, I just want to welcome or say thank you for everything you've done for the city and just wish you and Darlene the best of luck in your new endeavor.
Well, thank you so very much, Vice Mayor Edwards. I really appreciate that. And thank all of you. It's been really an honor, as I've said earlier, and I really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
So with that being said, and there are no new business, we are adjourned.